Will everyone be seated, please? It is 6 o'clock. I'm calling this meeting to order for our public hearings. And now I turn it over to Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, this is their first and only public hearing on an ordinance amending the official zoning map to change the zoning classification from single-family detached, attached, and two-family residential, or R3, to dwellings. The dwellings planned unit development for 33.52 acres located at 5100 Bluntstown Highway. The item requests the Board conduct the first and only public hearing to consider an ordinance and the proposed PUD incorporates the existing 130-unit tiny home development and community center with an approximate 200-unit proposed multifamily development on the northern portion with a maximum of 335 dwelling units. Staff from the Planning Department is available to answer any questions that you might have. The analysis is before you, and we are recommending that you conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt the ordinance, thereby amending the zoning map as such, and to do so based on findings of facts and conclusions of law of the Planning Commission and any evidence submitted at the hearing hereon. And with that, I'd like to pivot to the county attorney to make an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a reminder to the Board, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, and that means that if there were any expert communications, none were forwarded to the county attorney's office for disclosure in advance of the meeting, but if you had any communications with anyone in advance of this meeting that you need to disclose before the hearing, now would be the time to do so.
Thank you, Mrs. County Administrator.
Madam Chair, just one final thing. We also have a speaker card in, but only for questions. The consultant on the project is available should the Commission have any questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator.
Madam Chair, I'd move Option 1.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all over favor of adopting Option 1. Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number 25, Commissioner seeks the Boards to use the Boards to conduct a public hearing to formally abandon a portion of platted unimproved right-of-way located within the Woodville Platte as requested by the adjacent property owners in order to incorporate the right-of-way into their property. Commissioners, older plats, including this one, often contain right-of-ways that were never built and are needed and are not needed and currently serve no public purpose. Florida statutes requires a public hearing and adoption of a resolution to formally abandon any portion of a platted street. Commissioners, as noted through research conducted by staff, we've concluded that no current or foreseeable need for this approximately one-half acre exists. It's not maintained by the county. There is no future street or utility needs identified, and therefore, Commissioners, we are recommending Option 1, and we have no speakers on this item.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioners?
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Commissioners, item number 26. Commissioners, the purpose of this item is to conduct the first and only public hearing to consider the adoption of a proposed ordinance prohibiting unauthorized solicitation on private property. The proposed ordinance would effectively prohibit unauthorized panhandling on private properties, which has been a persistent concern of local businesses in the community. The proposed ordinance would not apply to solicitation on public properties or public rights of way, only private property. The proposed ordinance would be applied countywide since the city does not currently have a similar ordinance in place. The Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce has expressed support for the proposed ordinance and intends to work with staff to promote and raise awareness of the ordinance to local businesses if approved. Commissioners, staff is recommending Option 1 to conduct the public hearing and to adopt the proposed ordinance. I should note, this item appeared before the Board, and the Board, again, provided the direction for us to schedule this public hearing. Also, Commissioners, you do have several speaker cards on this item, and Madam Chair, I will defer to you.
Thank you. Mr. County Administrator.
Madam Chair, I know normally it's our standard practice to have speakers come first before we have a discussion.
I'm getting ready to do that, Commissioner.
But my point is, ma'am, is I've spoken with our county attorney about an idea that I've got that might actually address some of the comments we would have during speakers. So if it's your discretion, of course, ma'am, but I think if I were to go ahead and make a motion about something right now, I think our speakers might want to comment on this new motion within that context, as opposed to having them talk about what the current draft ordinance says right now. In other words, if I make a motion to make a change to the existing draft ordinance, I think the speakers that are here tonight would want to comment on that change.
Oh, I understand. I didn't hear the part about you making a motion. Okay, all right. I'll use my discretion, Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. You know, I think a lot of us have, on the dais here, have spoken with our business community and many other members of the community here. We've got a lot of businesses in my district, I'm sure in yours as well, have come to us asking for some resolution. You know, we've got stories of employees being attacked in the parking lot, employees feeling unsafe going from their car to the office early in the morning or going back to their car once the business hours close. The aggressive solicitation is affecting people's businesses and the employees, and the customers are not feeling safe. So this proposal comes out of that need. I believe property owners have the right to decide whether or not someone can ask money or ask for other items on their own property. This ordinance helps them exercise that right. However, there's an issue we need to address. The draft ordinance, as it's currently written, in my opinion, is too broad for our purposes here. As stated in the agenda item on page 747, the term solicit may include but not be limited to requests for petition signatures, support of any kind, money, donations of any kind, or some other action, article, or material of value. So what this means is it places additional restrictions on people's ability to register voters and collect signatures and things of that nature. These, I believe, are activities that are important for our democracy, and so what I intend to do with my motion is carve those activities out of the ordinance. So what my motion is, Madam Chair, is to adopt the draft ordinance with one important exception, to take out the following activities as it's currently defined under the term of solicit, taking out three items: signature gathering, voter registration, and the advocacy of political issues or candidates. I believe that this motion will address 95% of what the business need is out there, based on my discussions with the business community, while still making sure that we don't hinder the ability of people in Leon County to exercise their rights of registering voters, collecting signatures for petitions, or advocating for political issues or candidates. So that's my motion, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner Miners. There, second, okay, Commissioner Miners, will you look at the ordinance beginning on page 7, so that I understand it?
Yes.
On 750, and point out what section you're proposing to delete and what page, and that way we'll all be on the same page.
One second here. So I'll leave it to the county attorney to wordsmith this, but what I would do is on page 751, under subsection 2, that paragraph there is the definition of the term solicit as it pertains to this ordinance. What I would, what my motion asks is for this body to consider passing this ordinance as drafted with one important exception of, in this paragraph, subsection 2, on page 1, on 751, removing activities of petition signatures, voter registration, or I've asked this instead, explicitly making sure that this ordinance does not pertain to signature gathering, voter registrations, or advocacy for political issues or candidates.
Okay, Commissioner Minor, let me, okay, I'm on 751. You're at the top where it says solicit. Is that where you are?
Yes, ma'am.
Number 2, the definition of solicit.
Yes. Because the core of my issue with the ordinance as it's drafted is basically what you see right now written has a very broad definition of the term solicit. It pertains to the core needs of the business community right now, which is aggressive soliciting for money or for other items, but the concern here that I've got is that that current term of solicit also includes some of the very democratic activities people like to exercise in making this country right.
Right. No, you explained it. I just want to make sure your exclusion is clear with us. So you're saying exclude petition signatures? Is that what you're, is that what you're recommending?
Yeah, and I can let the county attorney actually wordsmith it because there's, what I want to make sure is that this term does not incorporate signature gathering, petition, sorry, signature gathering, registering of voters, or advocacy of political issues or candidates.
So you're recommending some more exclusionary language rather than that leading?
All I'm saying is that for this paragraph here, it should carve out those activities. And I think the county attorney had to comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, before I go to the county attorney, do I have a second on that motion? Okay, thank you. Now, Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as amended, the language that you certainly see in your agenda item, when you look at the definition of solicit, in the third line down where it says requests for colon, petition signatures would be stricken, okay? Then at the end, to make it expressly clear what is not included, I would propose adding a sentence that says solicit does not include
Okay.
signature gathering, voter registration, or the advocacy of public issues or candidates.
Awesome, okay.
That's why she has the law.
Okay, so do you want to amend your motion to?
Yes, ma'am, so I would
Add that caveat at the end.
Just to clarify.
Does not include.
Because my motion captures exactly what the county attorney said, but just her explicitly, her talk about make the edit, is that basically represents what I'm talking about. So I would make the motion to change that paragraph on page 751 per the county attorney's suggestion.
Thank you. A second. Discussion. Yes, Commissioner Wilk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is for Madam Attorney. Can we dictate what private property owners like? It's private property. I mean, they could come out and say, hey, I don't want you gathering petitions on my property. I don't want you registering voters on my property.
Okay, wait, 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 wait. Go ahead.
Madam Attorney, is that, can we do that?
To make very clear, if someone currently has a sign or posts a sign under current law that says no trespassing or no solicitation, they're not authorized to do that by virtue of this exclusion from this ordinance. It just would not, those activities that are excluded, petition gathering or signature gathering, voter registration, or advocacy of public issues or candidates would not also become illegal under our code, but there are current laws like trespass laws that currently apply to any activities on private property that are not authorized by the property owner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Thank you, Commissioner Miners. Any other discussion? Commissioner Maddox?
First of all, Madam Attorney, may the last three items reflect me voting in favor? Thank you. That's items, public hearing 24 and 25, I believe. On 26, so you said if they have no trespassing, what's the difference between what we're doing here today and the no trespassing ordinances that we have, the laws that we have? Madam Chair?
Madam Chair. So trespass is a crime
Uh huh.
under current law.
Right.
What this does is make it illegal under our code, but that is a noncriminal infraction. So it would not even, under this code, for the activities that we prohibited here, be a crime. It would just be a noncriminal infraction.
Okay.
And it's subject to the penalties that are in, it's the default penalty in 1-9 of our code, okay? But it's not a crime. So that's one of the distinctions.
Thank you. That's the biggest distinction I need right there. So if someone is, let's say someone is found or someone is arrested or given a fine, and they do not pay the fine, at what point does it become criminal? If it ever becomes criminal after someone has been, someone has used this for someone on their property?
Madam Chair.
Please.
So, so noncriminal infractions that are our code are prosecuted in the manner of a misdemeanor. Doesn't mean they're misdemeanors, but they're prosecuted in that manner. So if someone is cited or even arrested for violating this code, it would go through the normal prosecution process. You know, it's dependent on prosecutorial discretion. Is law enforcement going to cite or arrest someone for violation to begin with? If they do that, that triggers the judicial process. It would go through the state attorney's office.
Right.
Are they going to divert? Are they not going to charge? Are they going to fully charge? It's all of those things. So it would end up in the process if there ends up being a fine, which would have to be levied by a judge for a violation, okay? That would be just like any other fine that's imposed by the court, and what happens for nonpayment?
All right. So, Madam Chair?
Please, but let me say this, Madam County Attorney, that's just based on what we have right now. Am I correct?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Notwithstanding what's before us. So that's what would happen, even right now.
Right.
Okay.
So let's say in this case, something involving the democratic process, this business owner who doesn't want on their property, they call, and by what we have now, if we accept this, they wouldn't not be able to use this ordinance, but they could use trespassing.
That's correct.
Right. So if they use trespassing, then it becomes a criminal offense?
That's correct.
But in this case, if they were, if they were able to use this, it would not be a criminal offense?
That's correct. There's one other very important distinction between this and a crime. For someone to violate, for law enforcement to enforce a violation of our code, they have to personally observe the behavior. Unlike a crime where you can use photos, where you can use eyewitness testimony, where you can use videos or things like that, the law enforcement officer has to personally observe the violation to trigger a violation of our code.
In our code.
Correct. That's not true for a crime. It is true for a violation of our code.
So if it was deemed to be trespassing, then they wouldn't have to witness it? If someone called and said this person's trespassing, asked them to leave, they wouldn't leave? And so in that case, it does not have to be witnessed by law enforcement?
They could use eyewitness testimony, they could use video, they could use photos, witness statements, whatever.
Okay.
For a crime, yes.
Thank you. So I just want to make sure I'm explaining correctly, so I want to make sure I understand it. We don't necessarily, we have something in place that addresses this with trespassing, but in the case of trespassing, this would be considered a crime. By what we're doing here today is we're giving another layer for business owners to use that would not be a crime. We're taking out the pieces that are germane to the democratic process from this ordinance, but those business owners who do not want a person on site to do whatever they're doing, that doesn't apply to this, but does apply to trespassing, can use trespassing in that case, and in that case, it would still be, it would be deemed a crime, not what we have here today. All right, thank you. Madam Chair, I appreciate the explanation the county attorney gave me. I think I'm comfortable with the fact that even in this case, because what I was most concerned about was if someone is charged with this ordinance or someone is called about this ordinance, right, then what if they are committing a crime? What happens to them? Do they go into the system? Does it make them harder to get a job? Are they prosecuted? What is, what comes next? It makes me comfortable to know that this isn't a crime by our code. There would be fines, it'd be handled as such, but it's not a crime. What makes me uncomfortable, and there's frankly nothing we can do about it, and I do agree with pulling out things germane to the democratic process, is that if there is a business owner, let's say, because we've always all experienced it, those petitions that have been done lately in reference to marijuana, if there's a business owner that is getting complaints and disturbed by it and calling the police, and they could at that point claim trespassing, democratic process still, but in that case, eyewitness says, I saw it, I experienced it, that person's arrested or whoever may have you, it becomes a crime. So it puts me at a catch 22 in that, well, do I want to give? Because in either case, if it's not, if the business owner has not given discretion to do it, then they have the right to call authorities or to have something done about it. Do I want to give the ability for them to call and it not be trespassing or a crime? And maybe I'm thinking a little bit too much on it? Or do I want to take this, that off the table when it comes to the ordinance and make them go straight to trespassing, which is a crime? I don't think that it's going to stop a business owner from calling if they're really irritated by someone or if they're getting a lot of business that's being affected by it, to say, hey, this person's trespassing on my property, they're asking for petitions, they're doing this, they're doing that. They don't care, they just want them off. I don't think, I almost think that some, they provide the mercy. Now, I say all that, but I also am going to support the ordinance, I mean, the changes that Commissioner Minor has made. I just want us to think about what we're taking off the table, the option that we're taking off the table for those businesses that may not want to say, hey, I want this person trespassing, this is a crime, hey, I just want to use the county ordinance, and it's not a crime, but I want to use this ordinance and get this person off of my property. And then the extra layer of, and I appreciate you making that distinction, in order for it, if I call and use the ordinance, then the officer can come, they can ask me to leave if I'm not actively doing what I was doing before, but they can't charge me with anything. But if they, if they're on site and they actually see it, then they can actually charge me with it. It's just, to me, I think it's a little more complicated than us just saying, okay, we're going to do this and not this. Either way it goes, there, I mean, this really gives an extra layer of protection without charging a crime, so it really helps those in a way that may be those business owners want to get them off their property, but they don't want to charge them with a crime. It's a way of mercy in a way. So I'm going to support it. I just think we got to be conscious of the fact of what we're taking off the table when we take off that piece that gives the opportunity for it not to be a crime. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. I thank you, Madam County Attorney, for that explanation, and I think one of the things we need to, and then we'll go to our public speakers, we need to recognize that even with this ordinance, even with the amendment, the private property owners have to be proactive themselves. They have to have the sign posted prominently so that individuals will be on notice that this is private property, no solicitation. So if you come to a business that doesn't have that sign posted prominently, arguably your behavior would not be considered a criminal activity pursuant to what's before us today. And having said that, having listened to the amendment, and I certainly support it, Mr. County Administrator, I think it's appropriate now, if any of our speakers would still want to speak to the Commission, they're welcome to do so, but I believe with Commissioner Minor, that putting that emphasis at the end, that notwithstanding or excluding any of these activities does not apply to this ordinance, I think that might satisfy some of the concerns of the individuals that have come to speak before us today. Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First speaker is Rob Clark, to be followed by Darwin Gamble.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Yes, sir.
Rob Clark, 123 South Calhoun Street. I'm also chair of the Tallahassee Chamber. First thing I want to mention very briefly is to express my appreciation to the staff who have worked tirelessly on this ordinance. We've had an opportunity to provide input. We appreciate it, and I think you're going to hear some speakers tonight who will talk a little bit about some of their experiences in their businesses with this issue. We recognize that this is a difficult issue that requires some difficult choices, and I've seen a lot of the criticism of this ordinance over the last 48 hours. And I will tell you that one thing you don't see in those emails that you've received is you don't hear any solutions to the problem that we're trying to address. There is a problem that needs to be addressed. It is a health and safety problem in our businesses. We did a survey back in May of 2023, about the same time that this commission had a workshop on homelessness, and we were shocked, significantly shocked by the level of the problems we have in this community. With regard to the ordinance that's been drafted, I want to remind this commission that it does apply to private property, and I want to say that with as much emphasis as appropriate and maintain my decorum. This is private property, and what we're talking about here is a private property owner who has a right, if you will, to control his property. And, Madam Chair, you are absolutely correct. This ordinance would not even become applicable until that private property owner posted a sign clearly and conspicuously that he does not, he or she does not want people on their private property, just like we all would safeguard that right for us and for our families and for our businesses. And so when those circumstances exist, that private property owner has a right to exclude under the law. Now, if those steps are taken, that doesn't mean somebody cannot still come and solicit, but they have to get permission from that private property owner who has made it clear that they don't want anyone doing that. I've seen references to the Girl Scouts, as if we're not going to be able to buy cookies at Publix if this ordinance is passed. Let me assure you, Madam Chair, if I may, finish my thought. I have contacted the Jacksonville Council of the Girl Scouts. The Girl Scouts have figured out how to solicit on private property by coordinating with the property owner and entering into agreements and entering into protocols for how they do it. I'm confident that if the Girl Scouts can figure out how to solicit on private property, the opponents of this ordinance can as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Darwin Gamble, to be followed by Ed Murray.
Darwin Gamble, 1248 Halifax Court, and I am one of the opponents. I suppose I should be grateful for Commissioner Minor's amendment. Let me see if I can understand how this changes things. Let's look at what I do. I'm a volunteer for the Big Ben Voting Rights Project. We go door-to-door and canvass neighborhoods, and we ask people to do certain things. We ask them to register to vote, we ask them to keep their registration up to date with the supervisor of elections office, we ask them to request vote-by-mail ballots, we ask them to vote in every election, because in Florida, if you miss too many elections in a row, you can be purged from the rolls. All of those things are actions. So under the proposed ordinance, those things would fall under the definition of soliciting. So if your ordinance passes, if I go to an apartment complex and it's got a no solicitation sign, and I start knocking on doors and asking people to register and vote, I run the risk of getting charged with a misdemeanor unless I have expressed written permission to be on the property from whoever controls it, and it might be a big corporation with headquarters a thousand miles from here. That's what would happen under your proposed ordinance. What can happen right now without the ordinance, I could do the same thing, except if somebody comes along and say, I'm the property manager, please leave, I have comes along and says, I'm the property manager, please leave, I have to leave, or I risk getting charged with trespassing. That's the way I understand it now. So I suppose the little carve-out will help people like me, but if the intent is to just help people like me and leave our vulnerable homeless population still subject to arrest, I'm still not in favor of it. And besides that, let's look at the bottom line. Six of you, six commissioners, not everybody's on the dais right now, six commissioners voted to introduce this ordinance with that original broad and sweeping language in it, with the petitions and everything else. And I have to ask myself, why did you do that in the first place? And why are you not now embarrassed by it? Especially since it looks like you may be backtracking. So think about that. I mean, three of you are going to be on the ballot this year. If that thing passed with the original language in it, you could get into trouble. You might not be able to reach certain voters. You or your campaign volunteers could even risk arrest. Think about that for a moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gamble.
Ed Murray, to be followed by Nathan Pugh.
Hey, guys. Ed Murray, 1018 Thomasville Road. I'm a founder and a partner in NAI Talcor. We manage around 5 million square feet. Two and a half, two, two and a half million of that are shopping centers, the others are office buildings. That's, we have 450 tenants that we manage for, maybe 500. So we're on the ground every day, and we get calls every day about panhandling. Panhandling is an issue. We believe this is a good step forward. There's a couple of businesses, and I go through examples, but you guys have heard them, but let's say the Co-op on Parkway, I'm not sure whose district that is. When you have people standing on the sidewalks and in the stores, panhandling the customers as they walk in, customers quit going to the store. You're not going to, why would you go there? Well, you're going to go somewhere where you're not panhandled, right? So you stop. Your North Monroe Initiative, this has to happen. We represent the owners of the Center of Tallahassee. Their issues, it's 100 acres, their issues there every day. We represent the owners of Capital Plaza, where one store that used to be open, Hot Birdies, regularly had somebody would go in, right when the store opened, a panhandler would sit on the table and would ask the people for money when they're coming in and aggressively do that. They would have to get their staff to physically remove that person, which we don't recommend. We tell our property managers and our maintenance techs to not remove anybody, just call the law. This is an important ordinance. It doesn't go far enough, in my opinion, but it certainly is a good step forward, because we are talking about private property rights. So I encourage you guys to vote for this and support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Nathan Pugh, to be followed by Matt Tharp.
Good evening. I'm Nathan Pugh, 631 West 8th Avenue. I am one of the founders of Little Sunshine Pantries. We practice creating food access and food distribution. We deliver to about 20, 25 households, have about 18 micropantries placed near bus stops in some of Tallahassee's most food insecure areas. Some of the people we serve are homeless, some are impoverished, some are children. We have assisted in helping people find jobs, navigate the food stamp system, find shelter, and so on. As a partnering organization to Second Harvest, we get phone calls every week from people looking for emergency food assistance and often meet new neighbors while stocking our pantries around town. All that to say, we get solicited a lot. None of our neighbors have made any progress in their plight after being arrested, though. Instead, they lose work, miss appointments, miss phone calls from their caseworkers, and lose any progress they may have already made. The current situation is as stated, quote, "The blank trespass warning authorizes LCSO or TPD pursuant to state law to issue trespass warnings and/or to arrest any individuals who are not permitted to be on that property." Private property owners have shared that the process is cumbersome and does not serve the intended purpose of deterring solicitation activities. It appears today, none of what's being proposed is any different than what's currently happening. The complaint, however, from business and property owners is really just how long it takes the current process to get someone imprisoned, even though the current practice of imprisonment of solicitors hasn't yet deterred them. The proposed ordinance has no offerings of resources, only quicker imprisonment for being undesirable. If we want individuals to make different decisions, we have to offer them different options. This goes for the private property owners as well. They should have more available options to how they can mediate panhandlers on their property. This ordinance doesn't help either stakeholder resolve their issue. There are retail businesses, schools, and even the TMH residency center, the after-re-entry program that have adopted our pantries to create access to food. Transportation is a foundational need for the impoverished. We and other orgs are purchasing bus passes and then freely distributing them to people that need more opportunities to get to the existing resources. Fundamental basics like food, transportation, and shelter, like the Kearney Center, were some of the reasons this community was able to help a homeless veteran navigate the available resources and move him into his own apartment. The existing infrastructure for the poorest of the poor is a fragmented patchwork, and it's frustrating, but it does work. They work a lot better than jails. Currently, resources like these should be prioritized, expanded, and made readily available. We can do a lot better. I'll leave you with a quote. So, you say you care about the poor. Tell me, then, what are their names?
Thank you.
Matt Tharp, to be followed by Madeline Bowman.
Matt Tharp, 3628 Pine Tip Road. I also own an office building off of John Knox Road, and my wife works at the Center of Tallahassee. There's certainly a need for this ordinance, certainly appreciate all of staff's hard work on it. And thank you, staff, for also recommending that this move forward. So I just hope you guys will vote to move this forward and appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Thorpe.
Madeline Bowman, to be followed by the Honorable Jessica Yury.
Hello there. My name is Madeline Bowman. I live at 622 West 10th Avenue, and I'm a registered voter in District 1. Today, I urge you to oppose Agenda Item Number 26, a proposal that would undermine our community's ability to petition, ask for donations, or just simply ask for help. This is a dangerous anti-democracy ordinance that will further criminalize homelessness and chill political speech, doing nothing to improve the lives of Leon County community members. Additionally, this will just put more stress on our criminal justice system, an already overburdened system that lacks the proper resources to help with the root causes of homelessness. Instead of turning our backs on our neighbors in the name of private property rights, we should encourage conversation, civil discourse, and helping the most vulnerable members of our community. So please vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Honorable Jessica Yury, to be followed by Barry Monroe.
Thank you. My name is Jessica Yury. I'm the public defender here in the Second Judicial Circuit. We see, I can tell you, we see more than anyone else, the effects of criminalizing poverty every single day in the criminal justice system, and we stand in opposition to this ordinance. I do want to clarify respectfully that while this is a municipal code and an ordinance, it's going to have a criminal penalty attached to it. So let's be clear that people will be arrested, and this will be prosecuted in our court system. We do have an overburdened criminal justice system already. I can assure you that every time someone is arrested for trespassing, we use every resource that we can within our office to try and connect them with housing and other alternatives, and they simply aren't there. So to look for solutions, I would encourage you, Commission, to truly look at other alternatives like transitional housing, long-term housing, affordable housing, so that people have a place to go outside of living in the street. The other issue that we're simply not addressing here is significant mental health concerns that we have of so many of our clients that are experiencing homelessness. And if and when they are arrested, their place in jail, they wait weeks, if not months, for mental health evaluations, they are oftentimes found incompetent to proceed, and then again, are looking for a place to go for a long-term solution. So we do have great concerns that this will continue to criminalize poverty and criminalize homelessness. Also, remember that trespass warnings and trespass laws are already in place. That's a first-degree misdemeanor. So if somebody is on a private property, on a private residence, and the owner says, I don't want this person here, they issue the trespass warning, and then they are trespassed. If they come back, that's a first-degree misdemeanor. And so they can be prosecuted, they can spend up to a year in jail for that trespass. So these penalties and laws are already here, and I can assure you, if you look at any first-appearance report, you will see that they are being enforced, because you can look at the amount of people that are arrested every single day for trespass. So from our experience, I would strongly oppose this ordinance. I would encourage you to help us work together to find alternatives to incarceration for people that are experiencing homelessness. Help us find them connections to employment, connections to getting back on their feet and a safe place to live while they navigate the financial situation that they're in. The other thing to address Commissioner Maddox's point, too, is even with municipal code violations, when a fine is attached, that does have collateral consequences. If they can't afford to pay the fines, their driver's license gets suspended, any opportunity that they had to try and go to work, to try and get to school, and do those things is now impossible because they have a suspended driver's license. So I would encourage you, I'm happy to talk to you outside of the meeting, but to come to court, to see what's actually happening with the prosecution of these crimes, and to help us connect people with resources outside of continuing to arrest them.
Thank you, Madam Public Defender.
Barry Monroe, to be followed by Kathy McGuire.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Barry Monroe. I'm at 1248 Halifax Court. I had concerns, because I, like my husband, who came and spoke before you, go out every weekend canvassing door-to-door, educating voters about this very essential right they have on this country. It disturbs me that if something should happen to me, I have an accident, or I'm feeling dizzy, or there's one other 911. How would first responders be able to ask a landowner for assistance? Under your very broad language, it would appear to cover that type of activity unless there was an express car route. I was originally concerned about this, because I go out and I canvass in fragile communities. I don't mean the communities that look all night and they're visited by, they're coveted, in coveted neighborhoods. I'm talking about the fragile mobile home parks, trailer parks, modulated housing. People are living in substandard housing, and there is a lot of people who need assistance in getting transitioned to housing. So many of the people we encounter are either unable to have access to affordable housing or they're in transition to affordable housing. So I think that what our public defender just said, I encounter people like that. I just ran across a young man who was picked up in the system because he asked for help because he was feeling suicidal. He had a bench warrant out for notice to appear for what was the task? It was petty theft. But do you know that under our laws, petty theft can become a felony with enhanced penalties? So I feel very uncertain about this move that you're making to criminalize this activity. I truly take heart in what Mr., I forgot your name, with NAI Talcor. With the groups that I'm in, we try to coordinate with commercial landowners, and we actually contact them, and they tell us, no, we don't want you on your premises, and we have not been able to canvass or do anything on the premises. There are several businesses in town that have a lease with these big commercial establishments, and they are unclear on what policy there is to have with making agreements with landowners. So I'm just sharing with you, it is not a simple process, because the landlords have control. I know that I would not feel comfortable if I saw a house that had no solicitation, I would move on and go to the next place. If it had bad dogs, I would move on and go to the next place. But I don't find how you make this environment any safer when we're living in a society where we have so much gun violence. And being an African-American man, it really makes me disturbed at how I may be encountered with this type of ordinance where someone feels empowered, that they have more right than they have. If you ask me to get off your land, I'm going to get off your land. I realize that that would subject me to a trespass. So thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe.
Kathy McGuire, to be followed by Bob McClure.
Hi, I'm Kathy McGuire. I live at 1101 Pine Street. I want to thank Commissioner Minor for his recommended amendment of this ordinance, because I am concerned about the right to go out and do canvassing. And as far as I read in the analysis, canvassing and political activity was not one of the major problems that was supposed to be solved. So I agree it doesn't belong in, and I'm glad it will be protected as free speech. And I'd like to thank you for the position that this county commission has taken on free speech by allowing people to be out here on the courthouse yard when there are other places we can't go in town anymore when we want to express ourselves politically. So thank you. As far as the effect of this ordinance on the homeless, one of the things that struck me about this was that the staff analysis said that a lot of people who are engaged in the panhandling activities are transients. And if they are transients, then it seems like they deserve a warning, because this ordinance seems to criminalize everyday behavior that will add further stress to the justice system, as Ms. Yury already discussed. I think it's a difficult situation. It can be intimidating to encounter panhandlers, but they're people like us, and in my experience, if you don't want to participate, you just say, no, I'm sorry, and move on. So I guess I appreciate the change to take petition, solicitation out, but I urge you to vote no on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGuire.
I'm McClure, to be followed by Samuel Dohler.
Thank you all for the opportunity to chat with you about this really important issue. Many of you on the dais today I have met with individually to talk about this from personal experience. It strikes me that many of the speakers we have heard from so far have kind of focused on three different issues. One is the issue of homelessness, which is real, and one that we as a community need to address. One is the issue of canvassing and voter registration, which is part of the democratic process, which it appears that Commissioner Minor has addressed. But the third issue is the protection of private property and the ability for business owners to do and to conduct business and make decisions that allow them to move forward. We are at 100 North Duval Street, just down the road. We've been there 12 years. And apart from the issue of homelessness, apart from the issue of voter registration and canvassing, there is a real problem with aggressive solicitation. I can tell you, for example, that where we are at 100 North Duval, which is catty-cornered to Trinity Methodist Church, we have suffered from defecation, the acts between men and women at night and during the day. We have had to put in roughly $40,000 of fencing, lighting, alarm systems, and various other things to protect our property. We had a young mother who worked for us and had a young child, and she was coming out of the public library where she had parked, we're right next door to the public library. She was attacked with her baby right there as she was walking across to Trinity Methodist numerous times. And while I realize this is not private property, we have been accosted as we have walked to our cars. While I'm a father of two daughters, both 27 and 24, and I have young female employees that work with us, and I look at them oftentimes as daughters, I would not let my children walk out our front door at 100 North Duval on those days when it gets dark at 5:00 to go to their car. Frequently, on Friday afternoons, we close at noon. As many of you know, downtown on Friday afternoons is a ghost town. Nothing wrong with that. But when we have employees there, after 12:00 on a Friday afternoon, we ask them each to text when they get into their car, their doors are locked, and they've been able to drive away. This has been a significant issue for us, and this is very different than the issue of homelessness and very different than the issue of voter registration. We ask that you support this. We ask that you support this ordinance. Frankly, we wish you would go further, but this is an excellent first start. Thank you.
Thank you.
Samuel Dohler, to be followed by to vote Brian. I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
My name is Samuel Dohler. I've heard a lot of talk over what the solution to the homeless crisis is. This is treated like some unsolvable riddle. The solution to the homeless crisis is not the police, it's homes, it's food, and it's healthcare. It is through legal alienation of people's basic needs that the issues that have been brought before you today arise, not through the homeless people themselves. Item 26 is a large step in the wrong direction. It alienates residents, robbing them of confidence to just take their time in public. And I know that there is a distinguishing, a distinguishment made for public versus private, but a lot of these businesses are not experienced as public entities, as private entities, but are categorized as such. This expands to a large amount of the land inside of Leon County. It authorizes the police to presume guilt unless the person has a written permission with a very specific set of information, with $500 penalties, which are difficult for a lot of people to cover unexpectedly. These policies create a hostile environment for everyone, one that is vague enough to be used however an officer wishes. How close does an individual have to be to a no solicitation sign? This is left up for interpretation somehow. The ordinance encourages signs to deter or prevent solicitation, which have the claimed utility of mitigating law enforcement usage. But what item 26 has failed to realize is that it is the threat of law enforcement that gives the sign its authority. A police department with a terrible local track record and abuse of power being encouraged to be put in situations that risk further escalation. As county commissioners, you know how much a sign can mean to a community. The sign I see this ordinance pushing tells the community to fear to commune. Thank you.
Thank you.
To vote Brian, to be followed by Robert Lee.
Good evening. My name is Tavish Brian, and I will not be giving my address. It seems very clear that some people in this room want to equivocate panhandlers, to people who commit violence, to people who threaten their children. This is not a fair equivocation, and this ordinance does not propose anything that could actually reduce crime and see a safer community. And I think it's a shame that anyone in this room believes that could be the case. The proposed ordinance to prohibit unauthorized solicitation on private property is a dehumanizing and anti-homeless law that holds private property rights above the needs of our houseless neighbors. Panhandling, or in other words, asking for assistance to receive the most basic of necessities for life, is caused in part by a lack of adequate affordable housing, low wages, lack of healthcare, and rising rent. And these, amongst other causes, are systemic. If we want less people forced into a life that demands they ask for assistance from others, we need to address the root causes of the forces that put people in these positions in the first place. It is a shame to further criminalize acts of survival by our most vulnerable community members, to treat people, mothers, fathers, children, the elderly, as unsightly? To enforce the removal and arrest and fine them $500 is a punishment members of our housed community would have immense trouble facing. And this ordinance believes it is right and just to inflict this upon the unhoused community? It's shameful. Since the end of last year, I have spent every available weekend sharing food with unhoused people. The people I have met have had so much value, skill, intellect, and creativity to offer this world, and yet they must focus their life on survival instead of being allowed to thrive and live a life where their next meal is not a constant burning question. This ordinance will only make their lives more difficult and further disrupt any semblance of upward social mobility the victims of this ordinance may have had. The language of this ordinance is disgusting and dehumanizing. To call people unsightly is a low and horrid display of an uncaring attitude afforded only by those privileged enough to own property. We must oppose this bill.
Thank you.
Robert Lee, to be followed by Drew McLeod.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Lee. I'm a resident of Leon County. I will not be giving any further details of my address other than that. Before I get into my prepared statements, I do just want to mention, because a few people mentioned, you know, either having businesses or being associated with Senator Tallahassee. My two children go to school in the Senator Tallahassee, and let me tell you right now, we're fine there. We don't need this ordinance. This is ridiculous. My name is Robert. I'm a resident of Leon County, like I mentioned, and I'm a volunteer with Food Not Bombs. Every Sunday, we spend a few hours providing food, hygiene supplies, and community to our unhoused neighbors. I've had the opportunity to meet many wonderful people who come to our meal shares looking for support in an environment where they don't feel judged and looked down upon. I stand firmly in opposition of this dehumanizing and immoral ordinance. I don't know about all of you, but I am personally ashamed that we even have to have this discussion. The effects of this ordinance would be harmful and inhumane, contributing to the cycle of poverty, oppression, and violence, which prevents our houseless neighbors from ever finding a way out of their cruel circumstances. Instead of taking away one of the only sources of income our neighbors have and wasting thousands of dollars in police enforcement incarceration, our taxpayer money would be better spent on programs to help them find housing and jobs. A 2017 study from the National Homeless Law Center found that cities spend more money brutalizing and incarcerating our unhoused neighbors than it would cost to just house them. This reveals a moral crisis in our society, that poor people don't matter, that they deserve to be punished for their poverty instead of helped, no matter the cost, because it's easier to tell ourselves that people in poverty are solely responsible for their problems than to take responsibility, to take a sober look at the corrupt system that allows people to fall through the cracks like this. And because it's easier to sleep at night in our safe and air-conditioned houses, comfortable in our beds, while our neighbors are sleeping in the cold on the street, exposed to the elements and starving, right outside luxury apartments and gaudy hotels. Instead of treating every problem like a nail to be solved with a blunt hammer or police coercion, we should be asking ourselves, why are there people who are asking for money outside in the first place? What circumstances and systems led them to this situation? This is not a problem that can be solved with a hammer. Only care, compassion, and love can solve this so-called homeless crisis. Not punishment, not more violence. This ordinance is a shameless attack on our society's most vulnerable. No matter how much PR sugarcoating and politically correct rhetoric is soaked in, anyone who votes for this bill should first spend a week, one night even, sleeping out in the cold on the pavement, walk a mile in the shoes of the people they're persecuting. Then imagine trying to get a job and a house, or even a decent meal, every day, when this is your life, with no help or financial aid. This ordinance is not something that will solve our problems, and it is not something that we will stand for. The unhoused citizens of our society are part of your constituency, too. It's time to grow up and take responsibility like an adult, and it's time to do your job of actually representing the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Drew McLeod, to be followed by our final speaker on this issue, Spencer Brass.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing us out today. I own two businesses at 115 East Park Avenue, and another in downtown, and another in midtown at 1122 Thomasville Road. We are constantly inundated with aggressive panhandling. Now, listen, not everybody that's a property owner or a business owner has some kind of, I don't know, you know, desire to not help the homeless. In fact, when Mr. Pugh said something about naming them, I know them. Jeff, Nikki, Jesse, Wolfman, who lives in the back of our business, who is very aggressive, I have sat down myself in the front of Savor, my restaurant, took my shoes and socks off, and delivered them to a man in need. But let me be clear, when it gets aggressive and individuals start walking into your business, where a couple is celebrating their 50th wedding anniversary, and they start panhandling or coming to each and every table and creating chaos, excuse my voice, it's a little unnerving for everybody. To the point that the public defender had in terms of the long-term solution of, you know, affordable housing, I don't think anybody's opposed to that, but what are we gonna do now? We're struggling now to deal with this issue. And quite honestly, whether you don't like the police or not, it's not become their responsibility. We're self-governing these issues because by the time you get a police officer or sheriff there, they're gone. It's too late. And they'll just come back and harass you at another time. And that's just a fact. You know, we're exposed to, and Bob said this as well, public irritation and decent exposure, defecation, peeing in my planters, causing issues in the chain of parks, which we can't do anything. I know this doesn't address anything about public property, but we have individuals who have come and strolled all of their belongings in the park, and Parks and Recreation says we can't do anything about it. It's public property. Is that what we want for this community? It's just Tallahassee. I've been here for 40 years. I love this town. But to see what's happening downtown, to see what's happening in midtown, to see what's happening on the South Side, it's difficult to commit the time that it takes for us to build businesses and employ people. And to the last point, I don't know about you, last week we had a young man walk into Sliders, walked up to a guest, requested a cup of coffee, and his response was, well, you know, we'd take him to get a cup of coffee. He said, no, I just want the money. So I don't know about you, but I've offered plenty of homeless and aggressive individuals, well, mostly homeless, to give them a job, and they're unwilling to take it. So one thing that hasn't been mentioned at all, Madam Chair, mental health. We have a mental health issue, and that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker, joining us virtually, Spencer Brass.
Mr. Brass, are you there? Mr. Brass, are you there? Mr. Brass, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. I hear you very faintly. Is there any way you can increase your volume?
How about now? Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you now. Please go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, Spencer Brass, 2020 West Pensacola Street. I appreciate all the comments that we've heard tonight, but I have to say I think that our Weston Square Shopping Plaza will take the trophy for dealing with the solicitation crisis that's going on in our community. A couple of things, and Drew did a good job mentioning it. I have stood in our parking lot many times, and I've seen individuals come and with boxes of food and giving it to people. And those individuals have taken those boxes of food, thrown them all over the parking lot, thrown them at people, and walked away for someone else to clean it up. I have seen individuals come into our parking lot, approach those who are in need or who look like they're in need, give them money, and they walk across Pensacola Street to Halftime Liquors and buy themselves a tallboy. If these people do not get what they want, I have witnessed firsthand screaming, yelling, and attacking patrons of the Weston Square Shopping Plaza because they are not getting what they want in that moment. These folks are not using, the vast majority of the time, they are not using the resources that are kindly being given to them to purchase food, to purchase drinks. They are using these resources to purchase drugs and to purchase alcohol. We cannot have enough protection for our private properties. We do have trespassing laws in the state of Florida, but the truth is, we need more. Every day, liability insurance gets more and more expensive. Every day, business owners are strapped with the burden of higher insurance premiums. You Commissioners are responsible for harboring a safe community, but you're also responsible for harboring an appropriate area for businesses to grow and thrive. This ordinance is a step in that positive direction, and we urge you to pass this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. County Administrator.
Madam Chair, that concludes our speakers.
Thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner O'Keefe is in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is a big deal, so I'll start with, I have some questions to clarify, you know, about the ordinance from staff before getting into comments. So we lay out requirements of a sign that must be prominently noted, that will say no soliciting, and it references the ordinance, but my concern is ambiguity. So are we not going to lay out how large the sign has to be and how many signs have to be, every 500 feet, every 1,000 feet?
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Madam Attorney, can you address that? Mr. County Administrator.
I can address it. So we have had extensive conversations with law enforcement because, as all of the Commissioners know, you can adopt any ordinance you want, but when it comes to enforcement, that falls to law enforcement, right? So we actually worked with them in developing the criteria that you see in the draft ordinance. In terms of the size of a sign or locations of a sign, that's going to be dictated by the boundaries and the characteristics of each individual private property. If you have a storefront out here on Monroe Street, you're only going to need one sign, If someone is approaching that door, it's up to the property owner to make sure that it's an appropriate size that fits their property. It's going to be very different if you're looking at a one-acre parcel and where there's ingress and egress. So it's on a case-by-case basis, and that's left to the property owner to decide those things based on those specific characteristics. Now, in terms of enforcement, it very well may depend on whether that sign is visible in law enforcement's evaluation of whether there's been a violation. But again, that's a case-by-case basis.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So should this pass, anyone soliciting something of value, whether it be panhandler, Girl Scouts, Dance Troops, anything else, they'll need to get this written slip. And if we're in a shopping mall, there's an owner, there's a property manager, and then there's a series of businesses, who decides, who has the authority to give permission to someone to solicit in strip malls? The owner, the property manager, or an individual business or store?
Are you addressing that to Madam Attorney or that just for discussion?
These are all questions to be answered by whoever Madam Chair believes is the best question.
Thank you. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So again, it's going to depend who has control over that property. If it's a particular property management company who has control over the parking lot, it's going to be up to that manager to determine whether a person is entitled to solicit there either with permission or not at all, and for what purposes, as long as the ordinance applies. If it's a storefront, it's going to be whoever has control of that store. It's going to depend, and it's going to be case by case.
Thank you, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. When we talk about enforcement, do we need to be careful, or how can we be sure that we evenly enforce? So is there a way we can track or report or get a report back every year of how many Boy Scouts... of how many Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts this was enforced against, or how many panhandlers, or how many people who are asking for gas money? What do we have to do to make sure? I imagine there's, how do we make sure we evenly enforce and we're not picking and choosing?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Enforcement is up to law enforcement. There is prosecutorial discretion. That is up to law enforcement to decide. And if you want statistics, just like for anything else, you can request statistics from law enforcement about any number of issues.
Thank you. And then, let's see. Do we have any data, empirical data, about how much we expect ordinance like this will reduce panhandling and what the cost would be of a new ordinance and enforcing?
I'm sorry, did you ask about the cost?
I'll separate them. Do we have any data that we've analyzed to estimate how effective this ordinance, what an amount of how much reduced panhandling we can expect by putting in effect this ordinance?
Please.
Madam Chair, no. The chamber has done research and indicated generally that in another jurisdiction where they have an ordinance like this, that they saw an appreciable decline. But that's strictly anecdotal and not something that I or anyone else to my knowledge on staff has researched or verified.
Okay, and then, we heard a lot about nuisance activity and stuff like that. Are there already laws on the books that can be addressed? These are already crimes? Is this adding a new law that would apply to the defecation or the planter issue, things like that? Or there are laws for that?
All right, to clarify. One, this is not criminalizing anything. Let's be clear. If someone is charged with it, they are prosecuted in the manner of a misdemeanor. But this is not criminalizing anything. Two, this does not address, this only addresses those sorts of activities in the context of someone being on private property and engaging in those activities to the extent they are also somehow soliciting within the scope of the definition in the proposed ordinance.
Excellent.
One other thing, if I may?
Please.
Okay. There is no First Amendment right to exercise free speech on private property. I need to also just make sure for the record that is made very clear, okay? Just wanted to make sure because there were some statements to the contrary. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Commissioner.
Thank you. Those were helpful. That helps guide my thoughts on this. So I will not be supporting this. And some things I just want to point out, for the sake of not repeating what a lot of the great points people have made, is that it seems we are doing something that, when I look at cost first benefit, I see all cost and no benefit. And so I'm thinking practically here. We've theoretically addressed the canvassing and political activity issue. You know, let's think about where we believe this came from. Last year, the business community approached to talk about a panhandling ordinance, talking about medians and things like that. Well, that didn't fly because we ran into, there's legal issues that can't do it. And so we get to this request, which we've been working on together, right? That it can be private property. Now, everyone has a right to private property, but my concern here is, we're adding an additional ordinance where, if I understand this correctly, currently, if I am so lucky as to be the shift supervisor at CBS, I can call and say, hello, someone's panhandling or harassing people, and that can trigger someone to come out and deal with it. And the change here is that if I have the CBS and I put these signs up, then I don't have to do any of that. And even if I didn't give written permission to someone to solicit, then an officer could enforce that without any action from me. And so my concern is that we're adding a lot of risk and a lot of impact to a lot of people that actually, when you think about it, it really only changes does a phone call have to be made versus can someone just act on their own with a sign? The other thing is, I want to think this through. If people are soliciting, typically they do it because they need. So if they can't do it in the parking lot, where are they going to go? They don't disappear into thin air unless we find housing for them. Where they will be pushed to are public spaces, which is where we've gotten the most complaints to start with, starting years ago, is people panhandling next to streets and parks and public spaces. And so just keep in mind that there's either private spaces or public spaces. And so if we make it easier to push people off of private spaces in a way that doesn't even require, you know, someone in charge at that moment to say, I want them removed, it just requires deciding ahead of time for the signup, we may risk just pushing it into more exposure. So I just want to advise, on principle, I don't like this, but I just also don't think it's going to be effective. I don't think it's going to get what you want. I'm kind of warning you, I don't think it's going to get what you want. And so then the other thing is, my concern is that it also creates ambiguity and confusion, which I always want to avoid. Because we heard enforcement, as with everything, is up to the discretion of law enforcement. And we don't have in this report information from law enforcement of how they would plan to use this. And I think it'd be reasonable, even though it's not our purview, I believe we should take into account how things would be enforced. And while I have no objection to Girl Scouts, and I do occasionally enjoy Girl Scout cookies, and let's not forget Boy Scouts selling popcorn, that I have a feeling we're not going to find any arrested Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, whether or not they have written permission. But we certainly are going to see people who end up in the court system, even without criminal charges, who have to go before a judge in an already overburdened court system to deal with this noncriminal violation. And so if we're going to do it, hey, let's do it, and let's work that out. The other thing is, it creates confusion with, okay, we say if you put up a no soliciting sign. Well, we specifically put in here it has to say per ordinance, da-da-da, da-da-da. And of course, see confusion, you have to read the thing. This is going to go into the news. Businesses and individuals are going to hear it, and they're probably not going to catch that part. Are they just going to go down to the sign store and get a sign that says no soliciting? And now they think that this is enforceable? And now we create confusion and conflict for the court system? And then, nobody has to answer this question because, but you know, I'm curious. Now I'll leave it, because someone has to answer. You know, my issue is, I don't like it to start with, but my also issue is, it seems like we're getting to something, we couldn't get panhandling banned outright. So we bring it back to, let's make it so if you put up a sign, I don't even have to call and feel bad that I'm calling on a homeless person. So I absolutely think we should address all of these nuisances. Nobody should be attacked or aggressively solicited or their planter damaged critically. But we have things that can address that, and this doesn't actually address that. In fact, you know what? If it has to be viewed by law enforcement anyways, perhaps addressing it is putting some funding to park a deputy or an officer in these areas. And that's probably much more effective to deter it than creating new ordinances. And then an officer could observe these things and actually address the crimes you're complaining about. So for that and many other reasons. You know, and the other thing is, the other reason I oppose this is personal. Because, you know what, you can tell me it's not going to be enforced by this because, you know, we likely aren't, people aren't making this ordinance because of this. What about when my family's car breaks down and we're waiting around, we're asking for a jump? Okay, that's a thing of value, and you can say, well, that's ridiculous. But let me tell you what, if it's in law, someone might bring up a ridiculous charge if it's in law. So then, what about when my family's gas tank ran out and we hadn't made it to the payday lender that week? And you're just asking for a little bit of gas money, can't get gas. This applies to you if there's a no soliciting sign. And so while you say, oh, surely we wouldn't enforce that, if we don't think we should enforce that, we shouldn't pass the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Any other commissioners, economic commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to ask the Honorable Public Defender a question.
Yes, please.
Is Ms. Broxton here?
Madam Public Defender, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Broxton? Okay. My question goes to our work as members on the Public Safety Council. Our board, you appoint me and allow me to serve, and I serve as Chair of Public Safety Council. And I had a question. What is the average night of a cost of a restie being held in the Leon County detention facility?
It's approximately $100 a night.
Okay. What's our average night per year, the number of people that we're holding up, kind of, on average?
Are you asking how many people are in jail?
For 365, what is the average?
Sorry, average daily population, I think we're about 920 right now. And that obviously changes throughout the year.
And what is, Ms. Yearley, I know you know these things. What is the average number of days for which an arrestee remains in Leon County facility?
It would depend on the charge, Commissioner. I can't tell you off the top of my head.
Would you all think that I was erroneous if I said 300 is an average stay?
Trying to think of our last report.
I think your average is about 260, right around 260.
260, okay.
For your average length of stay.
Okay. What is the percentage of people who are of the 900 so folk that we have on average? What is the percentage of misdemeanors or smaller offenses such as trespass?
It's a small percentage, Your Honor, Commissioner. I understand. Commissioner, it's a small percentage. The vast majority of individuals held in the detention facility are for felony offenses.
Right.
Okay. So, in terms of what this would do, can you all perceive what this would do to add to our numbers of detainees or arrestees?
Obviously, I think it has the potential to increase it. I think the issue too, though, is that even when people are arrested, the continuous arrest compounds the issues for those that are experiencing homelessness. Because then, if they're released and don't have somewhere to go, they're going to return to the same area, they're going to do the same things they were doing before, which is why we try so hardly to connect them with reentry resources and community resources to keep them out of incarceration.
Okay. Commissioners, you all tasked me to serve on a, thank you all, both of you. And they both served. Ms. Broxton is our executive director. So each night, if we average 960 folk, and that's an average, it goes up the hill sometimes. We're close to 1,200. That's $96,000 per night to operate, to house. The 900 folk is 96,000. We pay for it. We're the citizens. And something which Commissioner O'Keefe has said, if we stayed at 960, that puts us at $35,040,000. We're looking at $35,040,000 for the collective of 960 people. I have not chastised the Public Safety Council, but I have chided us to strike a public declaration for a number of at least 850, reflecting our area code. As a goal to work toward. Because the state mandates us to pay for, to feed, to house everybody. I have empathy with the people of Pensacola Street, North Monroe Corridor. But balancing the interests of, I also have empathy for the almost $100,000 per night. And I see, and if the average stay of each detainee is around, I'll accept 260. For some reason, I was thinking it might be 300 days. And Madam Chair, I care all these numbers well anymore. But we say 260 is the average stay for people. 260, on average stay times $100 a night is $26,000. So for every person that we're willing to arrest, we are talking about $26,000 that it costs you, 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 you. And the cost and benefit analysis of the hardcore dollar value, to me, I haven't arrived at that point that I'm comfortable, and I just don't want to break the bank. Ms. Yearley has said to us, and she's the public defender of the Second Judicial Circuit, she has said that there are laws on the book. And there are penalties and laws already on the books. She suggests that mental health is a difficult problem, and it affects the population. She's indicated that this tends toward criminalizing homelessness. And Reverend Johnson, I thought about Jesus, the Christ. And he probably would be arrested for being homeless. Probably would have been thought to be mentally ill as well. No doubt, he himself suggested that foxes had holes and birds had nests, but he had no place away his head. He declared he had no address. He couldn't have even voted with no address in Florida. These are factors that, from a different role that you assign me to look at, that I try very hard to keep that bill down. And right now, to put this on the books, I'm just going to be conservative and suggest that if this even picked up 30 folk, 20 people, I'm not going to do my math in public in front of you all, but whatever 20 more people equals, add that up, and then multiply it times 260. How much that is somebody? Somebody famous can do math real fast, what that is, O'Keefe. Yeah, that's what that would equal. So that's a big number, okay? That's a great big number. And I'm just not sure that we, the taxpayers, spending up money, that this problem affects la di da di and everybody the same. Now, I'm empathetic. I support property rights, private property rights, and I am very empathetic. But as a commissioner, our budget hearing begins, I believe, in April. And what we're about to put on the books, or what it's going to do and resolve, we're about to put something on the books that's going to explode the jail. And y'all ask me to do my best to hold down recidivism, to hold down the numbers. And as long as I'm the chairperson that you allow for me to serve, in the taxpayers' dollars, I would like to see more information come back. And we don't have a prospectus on the projected numbers, what this do to the jail. We don't have a prospectus on the increase, projected increase. Law enforcement has not given us a statement. We've heard from business community. I respect that. But law enforcement is not in our notes. We have no cost-benefit analysis. Even the state requires our legislation to have a cost-benefit analysis. This lacks that. And for the runaway And for the runaway cost potentially, for what this, um, jail that we're tasked to maintain, this adds additional burden that I'm not sure we can afford, y'all. And with no law enforcement statement to say, we're going to pick up ten people, twenty, thirty, just call, and, uh, and the other problem is, uh, notice, what is adequate notice to place no trespassing? We've not defined, uh, does it need to be a glow-in-the-dark sign, uh, at night? Does it need to be this big, this big? Some of them people can't see far away, they can't read, some of them, they, they're dyslexia, don't mean a thing, um, those issues of notice, public notice, uh, is not defined or what's adequate. I could put something like, build properly, I mean, no trespassing, how many people can read that from there? I don't know, we've not defined that. So we open a wide lane, uh, to criminalize folk without defining except for the law and the property owner to say, by putting a sign up there, it is right there, and, um, all of that. Then how do you solicit a, uh, with a sheet of paper, that we say if you give somebody permission to do something, you got to write a sheet of paper, and, um, you know, kind of like writing a note to the principal, I guess, um, it has to be declared. Some things is not defined in terms of the cost and the injurious, uh, nature and the adverse consequences for what it would do to, uh, people's lives, um, I think due process requires greater, and this is not ready for prime time. If we can get it tighter and writer, uh, possibly I can get on board, but without a projected economic analysis, I see a lot more poor people adding to, uh, the thirty-five million and forty thousand dollars that we spend yearly, and we would just be spending more, and I'm not sure what problem would be solved. So I can't support it tonight, um, bring it back, tighten it up, and let's see, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Any other, uh, comment? I'd like to, uh, just follow up on Commissioner Proctor's analysis with the numbers, uh, from the public defender we gave an average of, I guess, arrests and the number of, of days individuals are, are incarcerated, you know, in the local jails, but I don't think it was a delineation between the, um, the charges, whether it's felonies, misdemeanors, trespassing. If I can ask you, uh, public defender, Yearley, do you have, um, maybe an idea or percentage of the number of individuals that you all, just on average, that you represent with trespassing, uh, charges?
I can get it for you certainly, Commissioner, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Right.
But as I mentioned, you know, I think all of us look at the booking reports every day, and I think you can see there that it's a frequent problem in our community.
Frequent with trespassing?
Absolutely, so trying to, with pre-trial release and law enforcement and the RISE Center and other reentry resources that we have, we try to connect our clients with, with those resources, but it, it's making sure that they've got a long-term plan.
And, um, and you probably, you might have an idea, I know you don't have specific numbers, but I'm, I'm trying to address those that are attributed to transient as opposed to homeless population.
Sure, I can find that out. I mean, obviously, some of that falls within privileged information, um, and talking to our clients.
And just the numbers, the numbers, yeah.
I mean, I don't know I can, that I can make the distinction, but what I can tell you is that finding housing, safe housing for our clients long-term is one of the biggest issues that we face, so.
And that's for the homeless population, not necessarily transient?
I think it's for both, and it's, yeah, and it's also an issue of if people have prior convictions, I mean, we talk about this all the time, that's another barrier to, to finding housing, so, working within the resources we have locally and trying to partner with housing, you know, alternatives is something that we focus on all of the time, but I think to say it's an absolute part of the people that we represent in our caseloads, I think it's, it's prevalent.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Public Defender. Did you have your hand up? Commissioner Maddox.
Madam Attorney, um, Madam Chair, may I address your attorney? Madam Attorney, who would make the delineation between if someone called, um, between whether it's a trespass or there would be a charge with, uh, under this ordinance?
Please, yes, I'm sorry. Um, certainly if the property owner says that they want to prosecute for trespass, that would be something that would be taken into consideration by law enforcement, um, but again, at the end of the day, in terms of prosecution, it may be left up to the State Attorney's Office, uh, whether to prosecute for a crime or not. So, uh, again, there's prosecutorial discretion, enforcement is by law enforcement, prosecution is by the State Attorney's Office, because, again, even though it's not a crime, it is prosecuted in the manner of a misdemeanor. Now, we could hire somebody in the county attorney's office to prosecute these, the State Attorney's Office wouldn't have to be involved at all, the public defender's office would not be involved, why? Because it's not a crime. But that is our option, we can either pay the State Attorney's Office to prosecute them for us, or we can bring it in-house, and we can prosecute them ourselves. Those are the options.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Attorney, nevermind, Madam Chair, this is something that, do you mind if I, if I address our sheriff's deputy?
Address our what?
Sheriff's deputy with a couple of questions and enforcement?
No.
May I?
Please.
Please. I believe you might be protected. So, um, so if somebody calls you, um, let's say tonight passes, somebody calls you, it could be either trespassing or it could be disorderment, somebody calls you, how would you handle it?
Well, if it's trespassing and, uh, if the owner wants them removed or trespassed, we will give them a warning, and if they come back, they'll be arrested.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't, if it's a first instance and they're trespassed, or if, if it falls under ordinance, your first resort wouldn't be to take them to Leon County Jail, it would be first to give them a warning, and then if, if it happens again, then at that point, it would be an arrest?
That's right.
I would imagine that you would handle this ordinance the same way?
Yes.
Okay, so, so it would be a repeated offense by the person who is doing the trespassing?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you so much, yeah, so, so I, I was, I asked the question because I was, a lot of, a lot of what I'm, I'm thinking about here is, what is the process? And we are talking about private property. If someone is asked to, I'm, I'm imagining that with some of the folks in these rooms, the, these, these private property owners, and even if it's at your house, if you ask somebody to leave your property and they say absolutely not, then what do you resort to? You call the police. If you call the police, the police are then going to ask you if you wanted them trespassed, and they're not going to take them to jail, they're going to give them a warning, which means they have to come back and do the same thing again in order to be arrested, or in order to be fined un, under the penalty that we're talking about today. What is that? I heard a lot of conversation around how inhumane this would be if we were to put this in place. When I think about private property versus public property, and I think about the rights of those that have private property, they do have a right to say what you can and cannot do on their property. And if they say you can't, and you continue to do it, why wouldn't they call the police? And then if the police come and they give you a warning, which, which he just, which the sheriff just said, hey, we're going to give them a warning first, they give you a warning, you leave, and then you come back and do the same exact thing that, one, the property owners have asked you not to do, two, the sheriff's deputy has took his time to come and not arrest you, but give you a warning, but then you come back, that means you have disregard for either the trespass or the ordinance that's in place, and you have said that you're going to do what you want to do anyway. Now, I'm sorry, one more question, Mr. Deputy, if, I'm sorry, excuse me, may, may I, Madam Chair? If it's a, if the, if it's, if, if it's an issue where the person who is trespassing has a mental health issue, how would you handle that? You give them a warning, they've come back, and you know, you can tell right off guard that this is not someone, this is someone who has a mental health issue.
That could lead to a Baker Act.
Okay.
So there's some discretion there.
That's some, that's some discretion there.
Right.
Thank you, sir. So even if there's a mental health issue and the sheriff's deputy can see there's a mental health issue, there's, there's another way to go besides taking somebody to jail. I, I, I understand both sides of it, I'm going to support what Commissioner Minor has said, because I could see if the first time someone does this and, and police is called for trespassing or disorderment, that then at that point, they're taken straight to jail, and they're not giving any kind of, of, of chance to say, okay, I heard it, I'm sorry, I won't do it again, but you're not given one time, but you're given two chances. And I would imagine that some of the folks here aren't the type of people who, if I've asked you to stop, they're not going to just immediately call the police. Some of these folks are going to ask you to leave, please don't do this, please don't do this, don't harass my customers, don't do this on my property, and then when it get to a point where, hey, I have no other thing to do, I got to call law enforcement, I've asked you to stop, I got to sign up, and you're going to continue to do it, then they call, to me, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of, there's a lot of chances in between the fine and going to jail, and the person who is violating either trespassing or the ordinance on private property to comply with what's being asked for. So, so for that reason, I'm going to support it. Now, what I, what I was wondering about a little bit is, because I was, I, what I don't, what I was wondering about is, is the amount of penalty, the, 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 the fine amount and the, the jail time amount. For the owners who are here, for the business folks that are here, or private property owners, because I would imagine this is when, when the private businesses, this would also apply to homes, what you want is you want the people off your property, you don't really necessarily care how much the fine is, you just want to have enough to, for, for people to understand, hey, if this happens, it's enough here that you're not going to do it and not worry about the recourse of the fine. I mean, I could, I could, I could get with lowering the fine and maybe even lowering the jail time if you want to do that, but as far as with the fee, I, I like the ordinance because the ordinance does not criminalize, doesn't make it a criminal offense, and if I, if I could, I would have somebody from county attorney's office, because then it's not, you know, like you said, it's not criminal, but it, it does give a, a place to do, deal with this besides going to trespass, and which then becomes a state attorney deal, so I, I like that piece of it. I get a little nervous about the fine, because nobody wants people to lose their license and stuff like that, it does make life a little bit harder, right? So I could, I could, I could get with maybe lowering that a little, but not so much that people aren't, aren't deterred by the consequence of doing it. But as is, I can support it as is, if you want to do with the fine a little bit, I can do with the fine, you want to do with the jail time, we can do with the jail time, but there's, again, I'll say it last, this is the last time I'll say it, Madam Chair, there's too many steps in between, I told you I didn't want you on my property, and you going to jail for me not to support this, because you have to blatantly come back after being given a warning and being told by, by, by the property owner that you don't, that they don't want you there in order for you to, in order for the sheriff's deputy to come back and deal with you, so, I, I'm going to support it, but I can't, again, the fine, I, I'd be okay with lowering that, I'd be okay also with lowering that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Madam Attorney, let me ask you a question, in the ordinance, it says fines up to, uh, can be fined up to five hundred, who has that discretion to determine zero or in, anywhere between zero to five hundred? Where does that discretion?
The judge, if it actually goes all the way to adjudication in the case, otherwise, it's settled along the way. I mean, if they agree to a, a fine, it may be something that the prosecutor's office handles or whoever is handling the case, but ultimately, it can be decided by a judge.
Okay.
That's why, that's why there's no set schedule or anything like that, it's because it's judicial discretion.
But it wouldn't exceed, as far as disorderment is concerned, it could not exceed five hundred, it says up to five hundred, so at least we've got, there is a, a limit.
For the fine, and that mirrors the penalties that are statutorily authorized for violations of me, of ordinances. It just tracks what's in the statute in Chapter 125.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Madam County Attorney. I don't know, I see this as, um, oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I've been really quiet tonight, and, you know, on this item, I think that we have to, we got to be pragmatic, guys, we got to be reasonable, I think we can get lost in the weeds on all these things, and this is not the first time that we have discussed this at length, okay? Uh, I would just remind you, you know, two years ago, we had a much more comprehensive ordinance before us that applied to public spaces, that applied to defecation and camping and all those things, and we had very similar conversations, and that did not go anywhere two years ago. And I think that we have to keep this in the context of, we're talking about private property, all right? This is people's private property, we got emails from members of our Downtown Improvement Authority, we got emails from members of the Chambers of Commerce, we got emails from business owners, and yes, we got emails from the public who I understand at large who are sensitive to these types of things, I think Commissioner Minor's, uh, current motion on the table is a reasonable accommodation for some of the concerns, but I would remind us again, that we're talking about private property, and if we're going to be pragmatic about this, we've got to appreciate that, uh, the, the CEO of our Downtown Improvement Authority sent us a very good email today explaining in detail how she and the businesses downtown have had to deal with this issue repeatedly, and that it is, it is unsafe, these are not, like, these are anecdotal in the sense that they're stories, but everything we're talking about is very anecdotal. We have an obligation to do something, to give some measure of regress to our business owners who are having to deal with this, spending thousands and thousands of dollars. Now, we have gone so far as to put signs in the medians to try and, and encourage folks to donate elsewhere, we've talked about aggressive handhandling, not just on private property, but on public property and public roadways, these are real problems, and we are just kind of dancing around solutions, and I feel like we have acquiesced now back, we're talking about private property here, okay? This is private property. The city of Jacksonville passed a blanket ban on public or private solicitation last year, jurisdictions all over the state are doing this, and we talk in here all the time about state preemption and all these things, the state has a much more onerous bill, working through the legislature right now, that would deal with all these same issues that we have continually danced around. And so now we're going to get another, we're going to get a bill from the state, probably, a law, potentially, that could be much more difficult to, to navigate than this, so I would encourage us to kind of step back and look at the big picture here, which is, we're trying to allow our businesses to function effectively, to function without fear of harassment, interference, um, you know, let alone all the other things, again, we're talking about private property. I think that the points that Commissioner O'Keefe made are good points, okay, about potentially pushing all this onto public property, I think that's realistic, uh, issue, but it's a small step in, in the direction of giving some, lifting the burden a little bit for our private property owners. And so when we talk about all these other things, again, I say, you know, if the Girl Scouts are selling cookies outside of the Publix, they've gotten permission to do that. If I'm soliciting petitions, and I solicit petitions, thousands of them, I do it on, if I do it on private property, I have the permission of the property owner to do that. If they don't want me there, I will not be allowed to be there. So this just sort of expedites that process, and also would act as a deterrent, hopefully, to folks who are continually invading the privacy of- to folks who are continually invading the privacy of private property owners that are trying to conduct business in a, in a downtown that we continually invest in and try to encourage to be, you know, a, a, a more vibrant place, and we have these problems continually. These are not new, we're dealing with this for three years now. So I, I'm going to support this item. I think that the carve out, or whatever we want to call it, for petitioning is fine, but I knew that if we did that, we were still going to get hammered, you know, so it's almost like, you know, at what point do we say, you know, not even private property, we shouldn't have any mitigation of what happens on private property? Like, we have to, private property owners have a right to protect their property and their business and their interests. So I would encourage us to support this. Obviously, the public defender's words are very weighty, they mean a lot, and I appreciate that, and I think that's caused some significant consternation. I don't think our goal is to clog up the, the criminal justice system. I think that, I trust our county attorney has crafted an ordinance that is reasonable and fair and pragmatic, and I felt that way about the one we had two years ago, too. So I would, um, just say we, we got to, we have an obligation to do something. We've talked up here about being hard and, and, you know, dealing with the issue head on, all these things, and then we don't. This is an opportunity to do a little, just a small thing to help our property owners and our business owners. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Commissioner Caban.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, you know, I, I sat here just listening and debating if I wanted to weigh in on this topic. Um, first of all, I want to thank everyone that has participated in speaking and expressing your opinion. I know that this is a very, very delicate matter. Something that's bothering me a little bit about this dialogue, both with speakers and just some of the conversation that we've had as a board, is we're acting like we aren't trying our best and spending millions of dollars working with homelessness. And it's a conversation that I think has been discussed one of the, one of the most since I've been a commissioner, is homelessness. Um, we've had a workshop on it, um, just recently, we've had, we discussed giving half a million dollars more to this. In fact, I believe it's one of our strategic initiatives that we just discussed at our retreat. Um, and I ask you guys, where do we come up with the money to spend on homelessness? Property values? Property owners? Where do we get the money for blueprint? Businesses? And so I think it's very important that while we are, are actively trying to work on homelessness, that we're protecting the, the baseline of our revenues that give us the ability to fund those programs. Um, and I, I sit here, you know, empathetic, um, because, you know, this is a big problem in my district. I live at 811 Buena Vista Drive. I've had multiple occasions, aggressive panhandlers come to my door after 10:00 PM. Um, I think about, okay, if I wasn't there, how that would, how that would have gone or could have gone with my partner, her being there by herself. Um, I implore my colleagues and speakers to go sit at Bagel Bagel on Pensacola Street in the morning, go have office hours there, go have a coffee there. I go there frequently, and I think about the struggles that business owners and people who want to invest in our community, people who want to raise a family in our community, and I think about the struggle that they have to go through to do that, to pay their bills or to support their families. Um, I, I think about how property values on Pensacola Street, Jackson Bluff, Roberts Ave, neighborhoods in my district, you know, folks that have been there for generations, 30, 20 years, are affected by aggressive panhandling. Um, and so I know this is a delicate matter, and I know that this is one of those conversations that come before the board where there's, there's no real winner and there's no real loser. But I think it's important that we understand, we can't do anything with homelessness without revenue from property values. And so that's why I'm going to support this motion, and I encourage my colleagues to do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Caban, Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Madam.
And we want to try to wrap it up.
I think, yeah, I'll be wrapping this up, I believe. So we don't have the right to go on someone else's property and ask people for money or other items without that property owner's permission. We just don't. And what this ordinance does is it gives property owners, businesses, a, a tool to enforce that right. That's it. And, you know, um, we've talked a lot about homelessness tonight, and I, I think someone said this earlier, but I'll say it again, homelessness and aggressive panhandling or solicitation are not the same. You have some people who are homeless who solicit, you have some people who are soliciting that are, that are homeless, but there are a lot of people that are not, that are soliciting on our, on our streets. What, what we all need to do, and we're doing this as, as best as we can with the money that we have, is addressing the issues of homelessness and, and helping people get into safe housing. And if you've heard us at previous meetings talk about this, you know it's true. We've got a lot more work to do, but we've spent millions of dollars, the city's spent millions of dollars trying to address the issue of homelessness and helping people that, that need help, that have suffered some sort of trauma in their lives, that don't trust people that look like us, to, to, to take advantage of resources and provide more resources for them so that we can get them to safe housing. It's not safe to be on the street. It's not. We've had people in my district get stabbed and die because it's not safe to be on the street. But I want to tell you one thing, it's, so we need to have compassion for the folks that are on the street that are struggling. We also need to have compassion for the businesses that are trying to run a business here and trying not just to help themselves, the business managers and owners, but also the employees that work for those businesses. Over the last six months, I have walked up and down North Monroe Street, and I have knocked on the doors of about more than 200 businesses, asking them what their issues are. Far and away, the three things I hear more than anything else are crime, homelessness, and solicitation. Solicitation is one thing I hear, one of the top three, from every single business I talk to. And some of them tell me, we're actually thinking about maybe not staying here at this location any longer. You know, we've thought about closing, because it takes so much time for that business owner or his employees or her employees to deal with solicitation on their own property when they don't want it. We don't want businesses to leave North Monroe. We don't want businesses to live, to leave Pensacola, or South Monroe, or Mahan, or downtown. When it gets actually harder for us is when some of those businesses decide, it's just too much, I've got to close, or I've got to, I've got to go to another town, or I've got to go to some other location. That's what, as Commissioner Caban said, that's when it starts to really affect our ability to do something about homelessness in terms of funding. So I'm going to vote yes for this, and I, I really strongly urge my colleagues to vote yes for this. I've spoken to a lot of businesses around town, not just ones on North Monroe, and they need this. They're asking us for help, and it's not just about the manager, it's not just about the owner, it's about the employees that work there, it's about the customers that, that, that go to that establishment. This is about our local economy. And I understand it's not a perfect policy, but we've got to do something. We've got to have compassion for the folks that are on the street, we also have to make sure we're creating the environment for our businesses to thrive, and right now, we aren't doing it, and we've got to take a stand. And this is not going to solve all the problems, but it's going to take a solid step there. So I urge everyone here to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I said earlier tonight, um, on item 18, that probably more than half African-Americans is about crazy. Um, I went back to my notes to make sure that's possibly approximate what I've said. And I said that African-Americans, I didn't say it as I wrote it, um, over the weekend, we about have crazy from the withering beatdown of our governments that have beaten us down to a pulp. The residual impacts of people marching on the street, uh, all the behavior that you see, residual impacts of, uh, Boku, uh, poverty and all kind of rules that have been cast down, uh, uh, and yet, um, our vantage point of history and how people arrive at who they are, where they are, and how they are, does not always begin with the generation of which they live. Okay, I get that. Uh, I know that people can't defecate, uh, and, 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 and do all those things, uh, on nobody's property, um, that's not right. But Ms. Yurley said that we got enough on the books, and as I heard the regression of thought from Commissioner Maddox, uh, he actually, um, gave, uh, the reasons why, um, we had both, uh, this is not being soft on crime, this is also being humane on those who are more vulnerable and how easy it is to tag them as criminals when perhaps they're more mentally ill and just been beaten down to a pulp, uh, if not themselves directly, um, the circumstances of which they derive. The plea offer, once we put people in jail and we get to that 260 days, one of my hesitations is that, Ms. Yurley didn't get to that, and one of those, um, uh, reverberating factors that go out, is that the plea offer, and I'm not going to ask you to come back, Ms., Ms. Yurley, but the plea offer is oftentimes, uh, maybe excessive, unreasonable, and what we really need is a study of, uh, the plea offer and the failure that we can rescue people, uh, before they spend eight and a half months in jail. We're talking about every arrestee is going, on average, with the way things go, going to spend eight, uh, and a half months for, um, begging for whatever. If you think that begging is worth eight, eight, uh, months of sitting in jail, that's the average. We got the numbers broke down on what folk categories and how long they've been sitting out there for a trial, for justice, for an offer that she will accept. That part you don't see, but you're not on, don't see that information, that's okay. $500, what's the misdemeanor amount, uh, in our state? Is $500 or less a misdemeanor? Is that right? $750? Okay. So if we are only putting $500 as a fine amount, then categorically, this ought, it can only be interpreted as a misdemeanor and not, and should never be per se a felony, or else we'd be putting $751 down here, $750, $700, $800. But this is a misdemeanor by the number of what it qualifies in the misdemeanor category as a fine. Um, and I hope that we don't abuse this, uh, to go and make it a, a felony. What is the city of Tallahassee doing? Is, are we putting the only ordinance on the book? Is we the first stop, the last stop? Does this mirror the ordinance of the city of Tallahassee? And, um, I'm curious, are we on the limb by ourselves? How does this interface with the city of Tallahassee's existing panhandling ordinance, Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The city does not have an ordinance that addresses or prohibits solicitation on private property. Therefore, there is no city ordinance that is on point, and under our code, unless they adopt one that's in conflict that would supersede ours, this ordinance will be countywide.
Okay, so what is the city scared of? Why ain't they active? Is the city police is making the majority of these arrests, 80% of them, more likely, is going to occur from TPD, but the city don't even have an ordinance go by. So why are we acting in a jurisdiction, which you said, the Downtown Improvement Association, the Chamber of Commerce, all these people operating in the city? What are we rushing to do when the city commission wants to stand up for activities going on in the city jurisdiction? I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. And I want to thank all the, all of you that weighed in, and Jessica, our public defender, Attorney Yuri, thank you so much for being here, and all of the citizens that have come in, uh, to weigh in on, on this issue. I think, Commissioner, as you all recall, a couple of years ago, I think it's, uh, Commissioner Welch mentioned, we did have an ordinance similar, um, most of us, it, it didn't pass, we didn't support it, because it did come a little close to perhaps maybe criminalizing, uh, the homeless. Um, I want to thank the county attorney and staff for bringing this back, and I think it's a, a far, a better ordinance than, than what we looked at last year, it might have been a year before, because none of us want to criminalize, um, being homeless. I see the issue before us, and it's, and it's very serious, it's, it's a crisis, to be honest with you. Uh, we've heard, uh, reports from, uh, Shinkton Lamy and, and his, um, and his staff, uh, about increase in homelessness in our city. We've heard reports that much of what's happening, uh, maybe criminal-related activity is occurring from really the transient population, and we are attributing that to, to homeless, but in many instances, these are individuals that come in, uh, Tallahassee for a little while and then, and then move on. But nevertheless, I see this as a crisis, and I think we, we do have to address it. A lot of what's happening adversely is in the downtown area. I have a business in the downtown area, and my business has been the subject of some of this type activity over the years, where I have had to call, uh, the police to come out for, for various reasons. Um, my business in the downtown area has been, uh, victimized with, uh, with debris, loitering, defecation, more than a dozen times, more than that. So I, I am very familiar with the frustration that the businesses have experienced in the downtown area. Having said that, having experienced that, still experiencing, uh, many of those, um, behaviors, I still am not in favor of anything close to criminalizing, uh, the homeless. And I think this particular ordinance that we have before us weighs, I believe, the health, safety, and welfare of all of the citizens, the private property owners, which I'm one of the private property owners in the downtown, downtown area, um, and also, uh, the rights of our homeless or transient population. Commissioner Proctor mentioned due process and, and notice to those, to those individuals. How will they know that this ordinance, uh, has passed? How will they know the effective date of it, the effectiveness of it? And I believe during the discourse, we talked about perhaps the first instance, it's a warning, and then if there's a second instance on that same property that has prominently, uh, displayed a sign that says no solicitation, then on that second instance, then it goes a step further. Now, I don't see that, Madam Attorney, in the ordinance. Is that something that we would need to adopt? Or would that just be discretionary if law enforcement is called?
So...
Right, right, the steps.
So you're asking whether, uh, there should, could or should be a warning, and then, um, no, it's prosecutorial discretion, and the reason is, uh, in talking with the law enforcement, it's very, very difficult for them to keep track of who's been issued a warning and who hasn't.
They will keep track, is what you're saying. They will keep track, is what you're saying?
No, it's hard to.
It's hard to.
Yeah, I mean, because you have people who are patrolling it different days, different hours, and everything else. Trying to keep track of that becomes very difficult for law enforcement, which is why they just have a standard practice of warning before they take action, and they do that in the context of trespass currently.
So as a follow-up, so if in this ordinance, if we were to adopt that specific language, it's almost not enforceable because that's not something they would keep track of for the most part?
It's difficult in application and enforcement for law enforcement to do that.
Okay. But if their mode of operation is generally, the first arrest, you're given a warning, and the second arrest, and I guess that would depend on the property owner that called and said, this is the second time, I guess it's the third time, this person has done X, Y, Z, then law enforcement would pretty much rely on that representation by the private property owner?
Yes, and again, keep in mind, for them to violate this ordinance, the law enforcement officer has to personally observe the behavior. So they're going to have to see the behavior occurring for it to even trigger a violation under the ordinance.
Right. And thank you for repeating that because that gave me a certain amount of consolation when you mentioned it earlier tonight, that law enforcement has to actually observe the behavior. But I think it would still provide a certain amount of protection for our private property owners, and what I'm hoping is that this would be a deterrent if private property owners post prominently the sign that says no trespass and no solicitation. That's your notice that you're not welcome on private property. Now, one of the things in the analysis told us that this does not involve public property at all. I believe the court and our attorney has told us that the court has indicated there's a certain amount of First Amendment rights on public property, but we don't have those same rights on private, uh, private property. So I feel, Commissioners, that we have got to do something to protect the health, safety, and welfare of all of our citizens, our private property owners, our homeless population, our transient population, because this aggressive behavior that we're experiencing now more than ever could be tragic, could certainly be tragic with all the gun violence that we have realized here, here in our community. I know that we have expended money, Mr. County Administrator, for our host sheriffs, host deputies, to engage our homeless population that are having mental problem, mental illness. And I think they're doing a good job. They give us a report periodically, and I know the sheriff says, well, when you recognize that, recognize those individuals on private property or in the public, we resort to perhaps Baker Act. But we have our host sheriffs out there, too, as the backup, and I think for the most part, they have tried to identify those homeless people in our community that are suffering from a certain amount of mental health issues. So bottom line is, I believe we have safeguards in place to safeguard property owners and to safeguard those individuals, our homeless individuals, our transit individuals, because they're given notice with the sign, they're given notice with the first offense, and hopefully, the sheriff will advise them that if this occurs again, and of course, on this same property, then there will be more stringent action taken against you. So because of those, those steps that are in place, I will support Commissioner Minor's amended motion that takes out those other areas that we're concerned about, that we really don't want to restrict. If we're on public property, such as the malls, strip malls, grocery stores, what have you, getting signatures, or as you say, selling Girl Scout cookies, generally, we get permission from those establishments to be there. But here, we're talking about private property owners that are experiencing some adverse effects from some, from some demoralizing actions on their property. So I think this sufficiently weighs the rights of personal property owners with any rights that these individuals will have to come or not come on their property. Now, if I don't have a sign up that says no solicitation, they can come on my property. Okay? But it's my responsibility to ask a private property owner to get that sign and post it prominently on the property to put them on notice, and to me, Commissioner Proctor, that's the due process. I've got that sign there. Okay.
Madam Chair, could we put no begging? How many people know what solicitation means?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Could we put no begging?
Oh, no begging?
I mean, how many people know what solicitation means?
Well, I think it's up to the property owner. We'll have to say no solicitation if we want to say no begging, and I think we could do that as well.
I think more people know that word than solicitation. I didn't know what it was until I went to law school.
What's solicitation?
I didn't know the word.
Okay. All right. Having said that, we have a motion.
One point of information.
Okay, briefly.
Brief. Is it known to Shinkton or staff, when a person is arrested, do they lose their public service benefits? If you get an arrest record, are you nullified from receiving homeless shelter, receiving food, bank? Is there any loss, I want to say, because poverty brings certain rights, but what is lost if you get a police record? Do you also lose your human services help?
No, Commissioner, they do not. The only thing that is usually barred is issues regarding sexual predators.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Thank you, Mr. Lamy. Okay, there's a motion on the floor that carved out an exception to paragraph two in the ordinance, and it's been seconded. Do we need to repeat that exception? I think we do. Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So subsection two on page 751, I believe, would be changed to remove petition gathering from the sentence that's currently there. And then at the very end of the paragraph, it would have a sentence to the effect of the term solicit does not pertain to signature gathering, voter registration, or advocacy on political issues or candidates. That's the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Minor. Is that consistent? Thank you. All right, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
Okay. Opposition, Commissioner O'Keefe and Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Aye.
I believe in opposition, too.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Is there anything further, Mr. County Administrator?
That concludes your business, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Meeting is adjourned.
We're through.
How you doing?